I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Going to do a roll call. Counselor Arms is not absent and staffs here and remaining councils here. And we'll go ahead and do a a change of additional agenda, which we don't have. And so we have a consent agenda. It's a little bit of a, there it is up on the screen. We've got a little bit of a a list there. I wanted to make sure the council, it's a little bit more than we've done in the past. But you had ample time to go in and look at the, the topics. And just want to make sure that we're good with this as a consent agenda. Of course, we can pull anything off there and speak to it individually.
I do have some questions on the master fee schedule revision.
All right, we could have conversation or you want to pull that out of the
Conversation is fine.
Okay. Go ahead.
Return check charge. Is that what we're being charged by the, our own financial institution and just passing that on to customers that pay us in their check returns?
I would defer to Sheena.
Okay.
Um, yes.
Okay. Multi-family, is there any more work involved in setting up an account for them? We're charging the same. Okay, no worries.
I'm assuming you're referring to
The hundred dollar fee.
For water, for water, for our
For set outs, yeah. Water service fees, account deposit, hundred dollars. That's all we're assessing. And then on the inch or one and a half inch meter, I'm assuming that's a typo. We have eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Yes, there's a typo. I will have to look at, this is not a change from the prior schedule. So let me look back at what the intent was. It should be one thousand
Seven hundred and seventy-one, I'm assuming, like the one below it.
Um.
Reduction of meter size?
Yes.
Yes, that is the number that should be there.
Noise permits? Do we just not issue those? There was a couple I saw where we had zero dollars for a fee.
We issue, we just don't charge.
Same with the tree permit? So why, why do we list them? Because we issued the permit, okay. All right. And then
It's primarily to let them know that, you know, someone's looking at, they still have to have a permit.
Right.
It's just a charge.
But the office still has to do the same amount of work, right?
It's, it's minimal.
Okay, okay.
I believe when the tree ordinance was adopted, there was discussion that we intentionally didn't want to dissuade people from getting the tree permit that we were requiring by charging a fee for it.
That's it. Connection charges, all of a sudden, we have these rounded figures now. It's seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents, fifty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Is there a reason under land development?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Eight inch with existing service? Your question is why it's kind of an odd number?
Why, why are they all odd numbers?
It's driven by a formula that was adopted by the city council.
But it's, it, for example, the first one, seventy-four eighty-nine, where it used to be seventy-two sixty-four.
Right.
So it's, when it was adopted, it was adopted with using the construction cost index
Okay.
To every year from May to May to
To increase it and we're not just, okay.
That is the formula.
And then instead of rounding it off to seventy-five bucks, we're leaving it at seventy-four eighty-nine.
Correct, we, that's how we've been doing since the beginning.
Okay, those are all the questions I had.
All right. Good job. I mean, yeah, thanks for checking that out. Any other council member have questions? Are we comfortable with adding this to, continuing with our consent agenda topics after that?
I'm good.
All right. Let's do a motion. Yeah.
If we're gonna, you might want to pull the fee charge out if we're gonna make a motion to correct.
With corrections, yeah. Yeah, let's do that. So we're gonna go ahead and pull the master fee schedule out of the consent agenda, leaving one, three, and four.
I moved that we pulled the master fee schedule out. I moved with the adoption of the consent agenda with removal of number two for the item.
Second.
Second, we'll take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, okay, that motion passes. Now, with the master fee schedule revision, resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and nine, I would motion that we accept the master fee schedule with the changes noted or with corrections noted that that were made. So we've got a second, we'll take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye, all pose same sign, all right, motion passes, thanks. All right, so on to, we went ahead and proved that. So we're on to public comment, this is opportunity for anyone in the public to make comment. You know, let us give us information or anything like that. Anyone now in our audience? No, I'm saying no, anyone online?
We have one person online that doesn't appear to want to comment. He waved me off, we're good.
All right. All right, now we're gonna go ahead and enter into a public hearing. So we're gonna go and enter now into a public hearing. Staff report, presentation, is that you who's gonna be doing that? It's on, so we're state shared revenue funds. Okay, so we have the adoptions, they're included in our packet. Anything to conversation?
This is just identifying that we do meet the requirements for receiving eligibility for state revenue funds.
It's
We're electing to receive those.
Pretty much a house duty, we've done this, I mean, we do this every year, yeah.
I move that the city council approved resolutions twenty-two thousand four dash zero five and twenty-two thousand four dash zero six.
So Yeah, actually, we'll back up a little bit, but I hold that motion. So, well, just having public testimony?
That's right.
Yeah, we'll just go through it, yeah, that's all right. Any public testimony on the, those two topics with the resolutions? Anyone online? No, okay, and then we'll move to, we'll close the public hearing. And any conversation with the council? We have a motion, go ahead.
Same thing we've done every year.
Yep.
I move that the city council approved resolutions twenty-two thousand four dash zero five and twenty-two thousand four dash zero six.
Second.
Second, we got a second, we'll take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye, all pose same sign, resolutions pass. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to another opening of a public hearing on the topic of it's resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and zero seven. And we're gonna open this public hearing on this. And staff report on that.
So this is, would be for the appropriation and opposing taxes of the budget that was approved by the budget committee at our final meeting for that. So the meetings have been held, we've noticed it, and the LP one has been published, so everything is ready to go. The group resolution for our adoption of our budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, and the slide should say twenty-four, twenty-five, not twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so we got a report, any public testimony on our budget that we spent two solid evenings on? I have one budget member here, thank you. Anyone from, anyone in the audience, no? Okay, then I'm gonna close out the public hearing. And any questions from council? We were part of those meetings. A good one we saw, they gave, you gave us the overview, of course, we had the whole packet to review. And, yeah, I move that the city council approved resolution twenty-two thousand four dash zero seven.
Second.
Have a second, take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Okay, motion passes. All right, thank you. On to staff, councilor staff comments. And city manager report.
I'd like to know do the, I have one additional item to discuss. Just a quick update on transition Parkway, so our bidding period is open. We had a pre-bid meeting here yesterday. We have six contractors, prime contractors represented. We have ten right now on our, on our plan holders list. And I know there, I'm getting questions from ones who weren't at the meeting yesterday. It was not a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Bid opening is scheduled for June twenty-seventh. We do have an amendment that will be going out, addendum, sorry, going out at the end of this week or the beginning of next week for some housekeeping items. And we are anticipating a word at the council meeting in, on July ninth, unless something causes us to say we want to push the bid day, uh, the bid opening date out, which we can do by addendum if we choose to. But that's the anticipated schedule. Also was gonna let you know that we have, we just received our twelve-hundred seat permit yesterday for this project. So we have all our permitting in hand except our wetland core permit, that we expect it any day. That we know it's, it's close to being done with this process. So that's the update on transition Parkway. And then a quick update on the crack seal and slurry seal projects. Those bids were received yesterday. We have four for crack sealing, one for slurry seal. The one for slurry seal is within our budget, so we'll move forward with talking with that contractor. And we haven't evaluated everything completely, but make sure that they meet all our requirements. And then the four for crack seal, we had three that were very close to each other and one that was a bit higher. So we'll be in good shape on that as well. Those both will be scheduled for sometime this summer.
All right, thank you. I have one additional item to get some feedback from council on. Northwest RE LLC, who purchased the forty-six plus minus acres for us for the development across the road, is looking at breaking ground this summer. They have found out that they're gonna need to do some deep soil amendment to the site to deal with some of the site conditions that they've seen for stabilizing the soil that they're looking at. It's gonna be significantly more than what they were expecting for site development costs. They've asked if, if the city would be willing to consider, instead of the standard enterprise zone of three to five years, if we'd be willing to consider a long-term rural enterprise zone, which could be anywhere from seven to fifteen, fifteen years. If you're willing to consider that, my recommendation would be that you provide us direction to, to work with them on what that might be to negotiate that. Currently, we have a minimum of two sixty-one. You know, we have the current clawback. We could look at something where we could clawback the full amount of our city taxes at year five, after year five. If that's something that you're, you're willing to do on that. But they've asked if we would be willing to, if we'd be willing to do that, consider that. So if that's something council is willing to give us the authority to have discussion with them, we'd come back to you with whatever the final might be on that. So we wanted to have some discussion with you, your thoughts with regards to that option.
Did they at all allude to the extra cost or the time?
It's, it was significant. It was, I won't say
It was in the millions for the soil work.
On it, so.
So didn't we kind of expect them to do this to begin with? And they didn't want to submit their stuff or they didn't submit their stuff?
No, we have, we have an agreement with them for, they are looking at going for the standard enterprise zone. And the expectation is that during that time period, which would be five year, they would have a clawback of the two sixty-one. So that has, that's assessed. So they haven't applied for it yet, they're, they're looking at that, but they are looking at requesting to consider the extended.
If they extended, he mentioned doing, maybe doing a clawback at five years?
We, well, not so much at five, I think after five years, we can look at that. If that was something, we can modify the clawback amount, anything after the five years. Keep the city whole for what we would be saying.
They would get still the tax break from county?
County and other taxing areas. They're still gonna have, as they have with the standard enterprise zone, they're still gonna have the school clawback that is legislated now, so.
And the rural zone can go out to fifteen years?
It can go out to a maximum fifteen years.
I wouldn't want to see it go past ten.
And that's
And so it sounds like it's, it's something we would, we would have, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to give us some direct, you know, that we would negotiate with them on that.
And did I hear, did John Pesci always online?
Yeah.
Is he?
Yeah, but I don't know that this is
Probably not, he's probably the, okay, yeah. Yeah, so how's the council feel about that? Is looking at maybe doing a, negotiating an extension? Mark, you mentioned, you know, maybe ten years, probably no more than ten years.
Ten years, we all know the Willamette Valley is an multiple gen also having to put amendments in the soil to firm up what they're doing. Doesn't surprise me, but ouch.
Yeah. Million dollars.
Those figures, so.
Right.
I agree with the ten year, no longer than ten.
And then it was discussed that would we keep it at two, and do the clawback at maybe, could we?
Well, if you want to, if you want to give us the authority to work with them on, on that, I, my, my starting point would be after the five.
After the five?
After year six, we would go to.
And then we get whole, at least the city's whole, right? And then they go ten for the county and other tax.
I would say, I don't mind negotiating with them, but I think before we make a determination, I'd like to see the difference in, in what that does financially for us or to us.
As far
Before we say, yeah, that's good.
Well, for us, after, so at, at the end of five years currently, we would be getting our full tax rate. So if we put in at year six, our clawback at three fifty, we would be whole.
So really, it, it's what we're negotiating is more the county and other taxes.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, yes, I mean, we would get it at that. So if you want to keep it at two sixty-one, if you want to give them a benefit of
Or do the two sixty-one, up to five and then three fifty at, at the clawback and then ten years, they're, they're on, they're on the books, basically. Yeah. I would, I would like to add, and there's been a lot of conversation about who this company is. And we're in this, we're, we've, we, I think we owe it to our community. If we give them an adjustment here, I think that's, it'd be nice that they could put publicly, maybe announce the company's name and what they do as part of this opportunity to go into conversation with them about this. If we're gonna help them, they can help us as well as to alleviate maybe some of those questions from our community.
Are they willing to have an open house like some of the others?
They, they presented at the planning commission meeting, so they did have representatives. I don't know that there's much need
Okay.
For an open house now, I mean, they have all the approvals and stuff. I think but they are I think that just announcing who they are will alleviate a lot
I agree.
Questions.
Yeah.
So how's council feel with directing staff to pursue that with sort of what we've just captured? The two sixty-one to five, after five, we go to three fifty. And then at ten, they're on the books full with stipulation of conversation about them just coming out and announcing the company name. Sound good?
And if they come back and say, no, we're not gonna announce who we are, we'll come back to you.
Yeah.
And I, and I think more too, I mean, because I get it, I get why they're not announcing it.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to have something on, at what point will you?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, at least, at least that, and, and and we're so far into this at this point. I mean, they have, I mean, potentially doing this work. I mean, they, they have possession of the property and
They're, what they told us is they plan on being, you know, they want to have the facility up and be, you know, by first quarter of twenty-six. So, you know, they're looking at, you know, next spring, you know, be starting with going up with the facilities, so.
Okay. Sound good, you got good direction on that? All right, thanks Kevin. Anything else? All right.
I have one question on that last slide. So the slurry seal, just something I've been noticing, and I don't know if it's impacting every neighborhood, but does that also seal between the curbs in the street? I'm just noting, noticing a lot of growth in a lot of our roads, that section.
That corner piece.
Yeah, that's right, between where the concrete curb and the asphalt begins.
Yeah, no, it really doesn't. And we've gotten some questions actually from folks about areas that have been previously slurry sealed, like, oh, I see cracks, what are you gonna do? Like, what's wrong with it? Well, there's nothing wrong with it. Slurry seal is actually a pretty brittle, thin coat on top to prevent the, to protect the pavement section underneath. And so, yeah, you're gonna see those cracks show up pretty quickly. And that joint between the pavement and the gutter, the asphalt to concrete, I mean, it's a joint, it's always gonna be a joint. And we do start to see vegetation growing as sediment accumulates. That's just the nature of how streets are. And we will look at, at once we finish getting through all the streets crack sealing, going back and crack sealing again, in some of those neighborhoods that have been previously slurry sealed. We don't typically crack seal that joint between the pavement and gutter.
Okay, all right, moving on. Attorney report?
No, nothing to report on other than we've got, you know, at seven o'clock, the city will be an applicant and put an application in county. So we'll be over there and, and tell the report out next month on results of that here.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Moving on, new business. We have a resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and eight, capital improvement program, CIP. And, yeah.
So again, like the budget, we do this each year. The CIP capital improvement program was reviewed by council and budget committee at the first budget committee meeting on April thirtieth. It's about prioritizing infrastructure projects, it's capital projects. So projects like we just discussed, crack ceilings, slurry seals aren't on that list because they're not capital, they're maintenance. It is for a five-year period from twenty-two thousand four through twenty-two thousand eight. And it's in the packet, well, the link to it was in the packet, we've all reviewed it in detail.
Okay, all right. All right. We want to probably take a vote on that one. So motion to approve the resolution twenty-two thousand four dash zero eight on the CIP.
I'm sorry, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All right, we got a second, we'll take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, all right, passes. Down to twenty-two thousand four dash twelve. What is this, SPWF?
So in January twenty-two thousand one, council authorized us to apply for a regionally significant industrial site, which we receive through Business Oregon. As you recall, that helps to reimburse us based on income tax paid through, as new industry comes in for that. With that, we've also been looking at going out for rent for SPWF and IOF for infrastructure. So SPWF would be for water and the IOF is for roads. The state has made a decision to look at a new program called the patient capital funding grant and grant application essentially for RISB's sites. This is fairly new. What they are asking us to do is, and it's generated through the income tax, employment income tax, as I mentioned. So the SPF fund helps fund infrastructure projects throughout the state and it can be either a grant or a loan. They're proposing a grant to us, a regible grant of up to five hundred thousand, with the remainder of up to three million as a loan. There's no, non, low interest at three percent. The loan would be in place, would not take, would start to see inactive for five years. And our RISB's, RISB's reimbursements would repay the loan balance of that. So all of the interests associated with that is also eligible for it. So as long as we were to look at securing a million dollars minimum, the five hundred thousand can be, five hundred thousand of the total amount could be reimbursable under a grant program. And then remaining balance, so if we went for three million, two and a half, would be repaid under the RISB's program through the employment income tax that we would be receiving based on employees. So large charges can be up to three, thirty years. What's interesting on this, right now, I believe where our funds that we have sitting in our local government account, we're already about four, four point two percent on it. So once the interest rate started occurring on this, we'd be at three percent. So we're actually ahead on the program, especially with it being a qualified reimbursement. So we've been asked if you consider approving us going out for, for the loan. So we see it as a win-win. And the main reason states look at this is they're granting those funds, allows you to have the funds up front without having to go out through other means for, for that. The three hundred million is, and I doubt that we'd get the full three hundred, if the three million, because our water project, which this would be used towards, is probably gonna be around, maximum about two and a half million dollars on it. So, and as we mentioned during our budget hearing, if for some reason some unusual thing were to occur and we had to pay back the interest, the payment, make the payment on this, we do have the funds available through our water fund that would support that with the current loan that we've had from the time that we built the, all the Miller's joint facility. That final payment comes out this year. So we have a five-year window before any funds would be, be there. So it's a pretty significant, I'll let you know if, if you have any questions regarding that. So since what we're asking for is approval to submit for the grant and patient request.
I guess I'll just add, we, we've been talking with Business Oregon about the five hundred thousand dollar grant per business, that job creation grant for quite some time. And this change in how they want to use their program came kind of toward the end. So this is the offer that they gave to us, we'll still give you one five hundred thousand dollar grant. And all of your job creation can go toward that, as long as you take at least another five hundred thousand in a loan, so total of a million dollars. Then we'll, we'll make that offer to you. But you can go up to three million dollars. Actually, the program will allow you to go up to ten million dollars, but above three is a threshold that requires more authorization and signatures, and we don't see a need to do that. So this is different than how we had originally intended to provide the water portion of this project. It's a good opportunity, but we wanted you to make sure that you understood what we're, what we're asking for here and why that is. It's because state decided to make a change in how they're running the program. So if we want to get any of the money, the five hundred thousand dollar grant, we have to do it this way. We can't just get a five hundred thousand dollar grant for the job creation on its own.
And under the RISB's, the state didn't run a scenario for us just off of one of the companies based on what their average wages. So what they've told us, their average wages are eighty thousand. So looking at the income tax, we get up to fifty percent of that coming back every year available to us to repay if we have RISB's qualified reimbursements. So if, I forget it was, it was pretty significant, it would, it would cover our, our, our payment, our, what our amount would be. And that was just for, for one of the companies. We have two that likely would be a part of that within five years. They'll be up and operating, and we'll, we'll have over five hundred employees each, so.
So by taking this as a loan, accounting wise, does that affect how the loan or what funds can be used to pay that loan back?
No, because it's intended, we have the ability to use water funds if we needed to, because it's gonna be for water if we had to. But it would be, the intent would be that it's gonna come out of the RISB's, the funds that we give reimbursement from RISB's. If we had wanted to take, you know, if we just had other properties selling, what I just paid off at that time, we could do that as well.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that because we're now taking loan, can we still use the water funds to pay that loan off?
Yes, yeah. And, and or if we sold another piece of property and we wanted to say, let's just clear that, we could do that as well. And there's no early payment penalties or anything.
And these loans, I guess we should have said, for those who don't have a packet for them, SPWF is special public works fund. That's a program the state's had in place for quite a while, and a lot of public projects, public works projects do take advantage of this. I know a lot of water projects do. So this is a pretty typical type of project for this program to fund.
It seems like, yeah, definitely a win for us. How's it, I thought I read in here, I was trying to glance over some of my highlights, but would this then be give us opportunity to potentially have the funding to complete the project? Potentially. And I know we were looking at, potentially have to divide that because of financial needs and what we didn't have.
Depending on what happens tonight, and the next few weeks, and how quickly we potentially close
Right. Which would be a savings. I'm sure there's a number to it, but clearly, if we can Which would be a savings, and I, I'm sure there's a number to it, but clearly, if we can do a project all in one shot, and there's a, there's a savings to the city, this is a low-interest type, uh, payback. And coming off the books with our water treatment, it seems to be, I mean, good timing.
And, and we could, uh, we could go for more, up to ten million dollars, which would definitely help us get the project done. But we did wanna keep us within the water fund.
Yeah.
And not overreach anything, so the project is still structured to bid in a couple of different schedules, different pieces. And we have the flexibility to make those decisions at the time of bid award and for six months after.
Yeah, since it's for supplementing or supporting the transition parkway development and, and out those properties to the south of that. If we had to, and we went to a larger figure on the loan, parts or street maintenance, would that be eligible for repayment?
The, the street part of the project is a type of project that can be funded by SPWF, but that's something we would have to do now.
Okay.
We could potentially go out, ask for an SPWF loan separately for that later, but that would get pretty complicated. So, yeah, that would be a decision we would need to be making now, and then that's gonna change our application, so we're gonna have to work through that process.
There's a lot more documentation that they want if we go for the larger, and it has to be approved prior to a supporting, so it would have to be done.
Now, okay. Does put a city in a situation where we're, then, again, paying, doing a payment, um, yeah, potential.
Potential, potential, I, I would imagine that, uh, we'll pay it off prior to giving, potentially pay it off.
Getting in five years, yeah.
So, and I was gonna comment, that, that would be my only concern, why? Well, yes, I get it, we're gonna have to if we want the grant, so let's do it. But my concern with asking for more to fund more of the project would be that somewhere down the road, we may not be sitting here, and somebody's gonna say, oh, we have plenty of cash. Meanwhile, that cash was sitting there to cover the loan.
Yeah.
And now it's gone, and now the city isn't a place where you have to make a loan payment.
And I would also just remind you.
That's where my head was going to as well, so.
I would also remind you, everything that we have done up to this point, and everything that we've done. So, everything that we are paying out now, that is not through a grant or reason. So, if, for example, the IOF or the grant funds, everything that we have expended on the projects, which probably is gonna be at least seven million dollars, will be also eligible for reimbursements under RISs'.
Okay.
So it may take a while to get that, but that's why we, you recall, we did our Economic Development Fund, as we did everything in there as a separate track. So all those funds that we did, that we don't receive any grant funding from, will continue to be eligible also for reimbursement back to the city under RISs'. So we'll see those funds coming back in, and it will most likely go into the Economic Development, you know, essentially go into the general fund, unless it was something specific that was paid out of, like, anything that came out of streets, we'll wanna put those funds back in the streets. Anything about parks, we'll wanna put those funds back. But anything that came out of our general, which was, you know, from our property sales, that will go back to general fund. And then hopefully, those funds will get put into things for future needs.
You'd said the state had done a modeling for us?
Yes.
Are you able to share that with us for my edification at some point?
Yes, we can, it might be easiest for, let me see if I can pull it up, is that an email?
Pressure's on.
Let me know when you're ready, Janelle, and I'll switch your computer over, but.
Trust me, she's going to town over here.
Like, I've got this in front of me, and of course, on the spot.
Of course, yes, typical. And this, and, and again, the, uh, what you're pulling up is maybe, what is that, Kevin Nitsch or Mark, is that, what was the?
The model.
The modeling to.
It was bar showing what we would see coming back on the SPWF now.
Hmm. Okay.
Based on, on the wages. And that was only on one employer, you said. It was based on one employer, essentially, uh, yes, on one of the employers, not, not both of them. They're both, their average wages are almost identical.
Okay.
I don't know what they're, they're showing.
I have to imagine, you said up to fifty percent of the?
So, up to fifty percent of what they would be, of the income tax, that would be associated with.
Uh, this, uh, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve. Uh, for us, uh, give authority and direction to council, looks like we have a motion up there, if anyone wants to.
I move the council approve the city manager or designate to submit for the patient loan request, and have the authority to accept the loan if awarded, and adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash one two.
Second.
Got a second, take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, all right, let's do the work and see what happens, right? Thank you. All right, um, uh, new business, we have, uh, planning commission appointment. It looks like we, in our packet, we had two applicants and one vacancy, correct?
One vacancy, two applicants, I don't know if there's anyone here. So we do have one of your applicants here.
Okay, um, and, uh, hopefully you have had time to look at that, I think we're doing all right on time. We don't necessarily have to make a decision today, but, uh, we do have, uh, an applicant here, it looks like a, uh, we have a packet of Mr., uh, Swenson. And your, what's that, sorry? Okay, and then the other is, uh, Michael Mueller. You know, we do have one of the applicants, um, and we had a chance to read a little bit about, uh, you're more than welcome to come up and address the council if you'd like. Yep, please do. And just state your name and, uh, resident of Millersburg and.
I'm Michael Mueller, I'm a resident of Millersburg, West Valley Estates, over on Mosey, I back up to the green space there. I've been a residential real estate appraiser for twenty-eight years in Mid Valley here, I focus here. So, I deal with pretty much every planning department in the valley, both county and citywide. And, well, we've just been interested in serving with the government. As I get older, I cut my work back, so I have more time to do more civic activities.
Okay. And, uh, you know, the commitment of, of the commission meetings and sort of that looks like.
Wasn't sure, it wasn't real, I didn't see it straightforward about how often, I figured probably once a month.
Yeah, they're scheduled once a month, uh, meetings go hour and a half.
On a long night.
On a long night.
Usually a lot shorter than that.
Uh, there's. Yeah, yeah.
Right. There was a period where we were rewriting our entire code, and so, yeah, there was a lot of meetings then. But nowadays, we canceled last month, we're about to cancel July's, uh, because we've got nothing going on the agendas right now.
Wow, what a change, it used to seem like it was constant, but there was a lot of work that was done up to that point with the.
Our planning commission gets a pretty light touch nowadays.
Yeah, um, and any, any, any questions for us?
No, not really, um, and when I heard you talking earlier about dealing with, uh, Core, getting your green wave, I've dealt with them before too, I was a member of Commodore, the Salem Yacht and Boat Club forever, we gotta do dredging, so. It's hard to get permits from all four agencies to do, put one shovel on the ground in a green space, and it can take years, so I understand that too.
Yeah, our, our city is old, is, is somewhat unique in the factor that we're half, a good chunk of the southern part of our community is, is commercial industrial properties, and then the north is residential, I'm sure you're aware of that. It's actually the line's sort of right out here on Concert. And, uh, you know, what, what's your thoughts on, on having industry in our city?
I'm pro-development, honestly, I, industry brings jobs, jobs bring, you know, as long as it's not noisy, smiling, we all remember the paper mill, how it was way back in the day, if you're old enough to remember that. Two of my kids work at ATI down here, um, and do great, and they treat them good, so. Give them sustaining wages to own their own houses and do goods, and as long as, there's a, there's a boundary, you know. I always get asked on my job, you know, oh, there's a school next door, there's a church next door, which, can't even use those terms anymore with my job. Um, outside, external influences can hinder values of properties, and that's what I know a lot of people are worried about in the neighborhood here. But also, they can, if there's a buffer, and they offer the jobs and everything else, it can benefit the community at the same time, plus the tax base is good too.
Yeah, this, does help with, uh, our tax base, for sure, so, yeah, um, that is something that comes up often is, is, and it usually faces by commissions, is some of those, uh, challenges with, with, with the balance, as you mentioned, the partnership that we have. Um, as well as just, of course, then, some of the other topics of, uh, neighbors not getting along with neighbors and, and so forth, and, and, and other developers, so.
I was on the board of, uh, the president of the HOA there, so I know about neighbors not getting along with neighbors. And when I say I'm pro-development, I'm pro-smart development, um, I like to take, I've been in the business through the nineties, I've seen the crashes and booms, overdevelopment of areas like in Salem, Eugene, places like that. And then smart development, which Corvallis did very smart development, so their property values maintained a certain level, because they had uh, responsible growth, is what I believe in.
All right, that's good, yeah. How, um, how long you been a resident of Millersburg?
Uh, we bought, we moved in twenty twenty one.
So a few years.
So we were one of the first, we were the third house in phase two of West Valley there.
Okay, all right, yeah, and, uh, and you mentioned your children at TI, and, and knew the paper mill, so you obviously have been a resident of the valley for a while.
Oh, all my life, born and raised in Brooks, Oregon, small town.
Okay, yeah.
And mom still lives up there.
Okay.
And I've owned my corporation here, and it's called Salem Residential Appraisal, but, or Mueller Residential Appraisal, but I've lived in Salem, on the outskirts, all my life, and we just moved to Millersburg just to get out of that.
All that race. Business, everything else, yeah.
Crime, vagrancy, everything that you see when you, when you drive through, so.
All right, well, thank you for sharing, council, any questions? All right, um, did, did, uh, Mr. Swenson get opportunity to? True, what's that? Trudy, I'm sorry, Trudy, uh, um, preferred name, yeah, Trudy, uh, have opportunity to, uh, come to the council meeting tonight? Okay, all right, is, is by chance, uh, on, online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, all right, uh, how does the council feel about making a decision? With the two, with the two packets?
We only have one opening, correct?
Correct.
So we're, okay. I'm good to make a decision, I mean, we're taking a vote on one of the two.
Yep, make a motion if you choose, um, from the information.
I appoint Michael Mueller to the planning commission to replace Monte Ayers for the remainder of his term.
Second.
I got a second, take a vote, all in vigor, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, welcome to the team, thank you, uh, for, you know, wanting to step up and be part of it. Um, your, your, uh, chair is right behind you there, um, so, um, and, uh, really do appreciate you wanting to get involved with the city and, and help us out. We always know that you need volunteers, and, and it sounds like you got the background in that, and I hope you're a great addition, I'm sure you will be to our, to our team and to our committee, so thank you.
I would also just say welcome, and Matt Straight, our, uh, community development director, will get with you also.
I'll be reached, that's your short.
All right, um, unless there's any other business, uh, we're gonna go and, uh, we got closing council comments.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I gotta open up my phone so I get the verbiage right, but I just wanted to, um, bring it to everyone's attention that I did send Janelle a message earlier this week. Um, so just something that we can watch, it's just kinda caught my eye as I was reading through some programs and stuff. Um, but the Recycling Modernization Act is supposed to give funding. Now, whether that's for it to come to the cities, or whether it's gonna go straight to the trash company, I don't know. Um, but hopefully, it's something we can get some information on here in the future, on whether that's gonna off, possibly offset residential trash bills, which I'm hearing it probably won't, I know.
I can speak on that, I just spent four hours with it today.
All right, we're in-house professional here.
It really pertains to population four thousand or more for larger programs. Um, I don't think they're gonna, um, if you do apply for money and you get money for it, it does come to the city, and then it can be dispersed, or the city can keep part of it, and the hauler can get part of it. Um, the hauler is gonna incur some of the costs for, um, we have, we have a, a new, um, product that we're, you know, the new products that we're gonna be required to take. And so, um, it's gonna be interesting, I mean, I have all the data on my desk back at work, so. Um, but, uh, yeah, it kinda pertains to the larger populace of over four thousand, to get the majority of funding.
I, I will say, though, that we have, we are included, we've been, they've been sending us stuff, the state has, for participating in it. Um, and we've been waiting, because they said it would be coming out online. Majority of the questions that they want from cities of our size are questions that we need to have a republic work with us on to answer, because it's all information that they have, so I've been coordinating, we've been coordinating with Julie, and we'll be getting with them to complete it. But I think it's like a twenty-three page questionnaire, and I would say probably eighty percent of it is directly related to the services, what's being done, um, by the, the waste management companies, so. And if I understood it right, really what it's coming down to is, those corporations that generate the waste, or packaging, are funding the waste, uh,
Yeah, and, and there's, there's also funding on, like, contamination reduction, you get three dollars per, um, populace in the larger, over four thousand, um, for waste reduction, uh, education and stuff. And there may be some funding for the smaller cities too.
Just taking a quick look at it, I don't know how much you were, with our large industrial base, with the amount of industry that's used. So I think, I don't know how that would come into play, but there's, you know, when you look at our, you know, that side compared to our residential, it's significant.
Interesting, yeah, well, thanks for bringing that, counselor. Um, and information, I think that we just keep our eye on it, but it sounds like right now, it's not really in our.
I can shoot you some information.
Yeah, okay, all right, um, I have a few things, any other council comments? Time to go, yes, um, I just wanted to bring up to council and any community members that do, uh, are here or are gonna view this, uh, June twenty ninth, we have our fiftieth year celebration drone event, uh, what time is that gonna be?
About nine forty-five, wasn't it?
Oh, nine forty-five. So at nine forty-five, at the park, so just wanted to, fifty years of celebration, and then. Oh, nine forty-five. So at nine forty-five at the park. So just wanted to, fifty years of celebration and then drone event will be a, a pretty quick show, but it'll be, uh, be exciting to see. So um, next was the remind council of our strategic plan, a homework. I talked about last council. Just to go through that, make sure you, you take a look at that and be prepared to maybe probably be on the agenda for July. Um, so just uh, see what we want to do. We want to go into a work session or just get some direction for staff to work on. And the last since it's July, um, just wanted to say if we don't meet, uh, I wish everyone, happy Fourth of July. Because we will meet after the July fourth, but you know, with things that are going on, we might see each other beforehand. So with that, I'm going to close out the council. Thank you. Good night.